Okay, let's call it a order. Regular business meeting for the Board of Education for Monday, September 25th. If I ask everybody to please stand and recite the pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, good evening, everybody. Roll call, please.
Jim Mattson.
Here.
Pat Grudy.
Here.
Kevin Huber.
Here.
Scott Moose.
Here.
Karen Lunsden.
Here.
Ellen Mauer.
Here.
Mac Thurman.
Here. Alright, so we have everybody present. On our agenda this evening, we will open it up for public comment. Remind everybody from the public that they're going to speak, to limit your comments to three minutes, please. We have an educational presentation on innovation grants in action. We will have updates from the student school board reps, superintendent's report. There are a number of bids in there. They will discuss the consent vote agenda, which we reviewed earlier in the month. And then program personnel, facilities and finance. Nothing on property rates, Heather?
No.
Okay. Anything?
Yeah, you can just kind of update where we're at.
I'll get a quick update.
So, a quick update? Anything on CO2?
Yes.
Okay. And Jen, anything on that?
There's one quick.
Okay, good. Alright. So, let's go. Anybody from the public who'd like to speak? Nope? Okay. So, we will then go to our educational presentation, innovation grants in action.
Bryant, are you or Tom going to introduce our guest this evening?
Good evening. Here we go, good evening. It is with great pleasure that I get to introduce to you a Libertyville High School teacher extraordinaire. Ms. Sherri Rooks teaches AP Chemistry this year. And I learned and kind of met Sherri before we ever met in person because when I started at Libertyville High School in the summer, I kept getting emails about this chemistry teacher that was making all of these presentations at national conferences and winning all of these awards. And every time I would look at who it was, it was always Sherri Rooks. So, I was just always getting filled in about the extraordinary work she was doing. And then I've gotten to see some of this in person. So, we are in for a very interactive presentation this evening, highlighting some of the work she's doing and the support from our district education foundation. So, without further ado, the extraordinary, Sherri Rooks.
Yay! Good! Applause.
So, good evening, everyone. I am here to talk about how my innovation grants transformed the chemistry classroom. So, it's going to be a journey. The very first one that I won was for Chemistry Day. And then later on, I talked to the foundation board and I was able to receive money for my biodiesel project. With the biodiesel project, I had my students research and learn how to make biodiesel with pure vegetable oil. It was a simple organic reaction, very easy for the students to understand. And they were able to then analyze and compare the properties of biodiesel versus normal diesel versus gasoline. However, it didn't stop right there because the waste product of biodiesel was glycerin. And then my students learned how to make glycerin soap with the waste product. So, 100% of the products was used for something. After that, my students researched and tried to figure out how to make biodiesel with waste vegetable oil. And they learned on all the steps that they needed to make sure the standards were kept with the pure vegetable oil with the waste vegetable oil. The other project that year was my Chemistry Day program. And this was when I was teaching honors chemistry. I would have my students at the end of the year, look at topics that we taught. And they had to come up with an activity and teach younger kids the chemistry concept. So, on a Saturday morning, I would have my chemistry students all come in. And we would then teach all chemistry to kindergartners, first graders, second graders with many hands-on activities. And they had to explain it in simple terms, not the chemistry terms that they learned. The following year, I was able to receive two grants, one for material science and one for the chemistry of foods. With material science, if you look all around this room, you see a bunch of solids. However, in a traditional chemistry classroom, we talk about gas laws, we talk about liquids, we do a lot of aqueous chemistry. We don't really talk about solids. So, in this unit, my students were able to look at the chemistry of polymers, which looked at resins and foams, and looked at how adding just additives to the resin could create new properties and new things with that foam. They also learned about heat treating of metals and looked at what would do with the heat treating, whether it be stronger, making it tougher, making it more malleable, etc. They were then able to look with the rolling mill and with the draw plates, be able to see how malleable metals really were. And they really enjoyed seeing how flat they can make their penny. This is not even the longest penny. We also were able to melt and pour tin. They never were able to see molten metal. This is the first time students were able to actually see molten metal in the classroom and actually see metal melt at a true temperature. Not at a slow period of time, at a true temperature, it has a melting point. They were making what is known as a tin bar. And then with tin, it has a special property, eight elements on the periodic table. When you bend it, all the atoms will shear and make an acoustic sound. And Tom is going to try this with my tin bar. He's going to use his mighty muscles.
Oh, boy.
John's going to move.
Did you hear the noise?
Heard like a cracking sound.
That is what is known as tin cry. So, only a few elements actually do that. So, my students were able to make their own little tin cry bars. And it was neat because once it was done, they could just re-melt it and make a new one. With the chemistry of food, they loved it. They used the George Foreman grills, they used toaster ovens. We looked at the biochemistry of fruits, vegetables, of spices. And then we ended up with the chemistry of baking and candy making. They learned about crystal size and how to make the best fudge possible versus solution chemistry and mixtures with making lollipops, taffy, gum. They actually had to sample everything, so... The following year, I got three grants, fishtails, solar cells, and nanotechnology. Fishtails, we were able to collaborate with AP Bio and AP Chemistry. We went to the Shedd Aquarium and we actually worked with scientists to understand the chemistry and biology of Lake Michigan. And to try to learn and help out with ideas on how to fix some of our environmental issues. With solar cells, I was able to buy conductive glass. And they were able to create solar cells using blackberries, raspberries, lots of fruits, vegetables, and flowers as anodes, test it out and see how efficient that solar cell was. We then connected solar cells together to make a solar panel. And then they were able to light a light bulb and a miniature fan with it. Nanotechnology, that's a huge topic now, but it's been around since medieval times. If you look at stained glass, anything ruby red or yellow-green stained glass from medieval times was due to nano-sized particles of gold and silver. You also had, born with a silver spoon in your mouth, that's not because they were just rich, but every time you ate with silver, you scraped off nano-sized particles of silver. And you actually were antimicrobial, that silver, so you became healthier and were able to fight off any illnesses. The one that we're going to do today, because I don't like to talk all the time, is the lotus effect because of the lotus leaf. The lotus leaf is a self-cleaning leaf. So, all that dirt and grime gets on the lotus leaf. When it rains, the rainwater likes to beat up and be attached to itself, then the leaf. So, then the water just rolls off like you see in that middle picture, picking up all the grime, and it cleans itself. This is the start of your stain-resistant clothing due to nanotechnology. So, you have a baggie that has two spoons and a pipe pet in it. And so, the first spoon is the one that you're going to look at, it's kind of tanish white, that's normal play sand. And with your pipe pet, you're going to just put one drop of water on that spoon. Look at how that water is on the play sand. You see that it beads up slightly. Try to twist your spoon to see if you can roll that spot around. Doesn't do much, not fun. But if you pick the orange spoon, and it's not because I'm from the... My favorite color is orange, so you guys know. If you put one drop of water on this spoon, you will see how it beads up. And you try to twist your spoon back and forth, you can move that water around. And that's because this is so hydrophobic that the water wants to attract to itself, not to the sand. And so, this is how the stain-resistant clothing is. You can get a spray, put it on mirrors, and it will never fog up. So, people who wear glasses would never have problems getting out of the shower or going from cold weather to hot weather inside in the wintertime. That is how we get our clothing, all those materials, they're that way. So, one of the activities my students do is that they have to research and try to create a lotus effect spray. Those spoons are for you, so you can have that pipe pet and spooning activity forever. The following year was apps for chemistry. I got an iPad so I could use DoSteri and everything in the classroom. And extruding bioplastics. It's another entity of material science, but I saw a need for bioplastics because there was a lot of news stories saying compostable plastics or plastics won't degrade. If it is a compostable plastic, that means the plastic has to degrade at the same rate as paper, breaks down, that you can't see it at all in the environment. And we could keep using that land afterwards, and it's renewable. One thing about bioplastics, it's that it is a thermoplastic. So, here is my next little learning lesson for you. I am not going to melt anything. So, everyone knows that this is a milk jug. This is a heat gun, not a blow dryer. This is too hot, it will burn if you want a new look, if you think bald looks are in.
And they are.
So, I tell everyone, it is just like my students. Your plastic water bottle, your plastic milk jugs need a little time to wake up and move. So, I'm going to give my plastic jug energy. And as I give it energy, my plastic starts moving. And one fascinating thing is when the plastic molecules move around and you can't really see, it becomes more translucent, transparent, that you can actually see through it. But that's not the fun, exciting part. Why are we recycling milk jugs? So, I'm going to add some heat to this guy. And now you have the plastic bags that you get at Target, at Best Buy, everywhere else. And in fact, one of the activities my students have to do is those chocolate milk bottles that are in the cafeteria. They bring them to my classroom, they measure how much water could hold in them. Then we use the heat gun, they blow it out, and then they see how much more water we could actually hold. Because the amount of plastic we use with these milk jugs is because we jam everything into our refrigerators. And we have containers like pizza boxes and everything that could break. Milk will hold in a plastic bag that is as thin as your paper bags or your vegetable bags. But we are just not talented to keep them that way. Then I got a gas chromatograph to add to my collection of Spec 20s. So, now my students are able to add and analyze unknown gas compounds, which is a real nice thing besides just analyzing colorful solutions. Me and the physics department, we were able to get swivelled cameras to help with our flip classroom one year. Then I was able to take a green chemistry class and learn about the 12 principles of green chemistry, try to change and transform some of my traditional chemistry labs into more green, environmentally friendly ones, as well as my students now do research to figure out what products are more environmentally hazardous and need to be working on a greener solution. Then, one that I really like to talk about is connecting earth science and chemistry. We do soil testing, we do water testing. But the one that I really like in this unit is my clean water project. Every class in AP Chem picks a third world country. They have to analyze that third world country, see what is around in that environment. In fact, one group who did Africa, researched and saw that somewhere in Africa, they actually made the first house made out of plastic empty bottles. And so, they knew that third world countries had a lot of plastic. They looked at the soil, what kind of gravel. And their job was to come up with a filtration system that the third world country would be able to use their own supplies to try to clean the water. We couldn't take out of any of the microbes, but they got the water to be cleaner. And so, this is one step working on the global issue of clean water supplies. And lastly, this past November, I was able to get three grants, one for a light board, one for radiation, and one for happy atoms with the rest of the chemistry department. And so, here is, while I'm talking, a short example of a light board activity. And what a light board is, and on the PowerPoint, it's not as clear as if they saw it on YouTube, you are able to talk and write at the same time. So, it's flipping the image and the students are able to watch you do the actual activity as if you were in the classroom on your whiteboard. And so, for acid-base equilibrium problems, for redox reactions, this is one way students are going to be able to watch, listen, and see someone go through a problem instead of just hitting click, click, click on the PowerPoint. With the happy atoms, instead of the normal ball and stick models, we now have ones that have lone pairs. So, students understand covalent bonding more. And the nice thing about these, they are magnetic. We could also do ionic bonds, something that we were never able to do with the ball and stick models. For the radiation in the palm of your hand, these are the bagger counters that we used to have in the classroom. Okay, the old-fashioned one, the digital one. But now, Mr. Bush and myself, we're able to have that little tiny thing on the end of the cellphone, which is a bagger counter. And our students, using the iPads in the classroom, using their Chromebook or using their cellphones, are able to add this adapter to it and test the radiation of different materials. So, they go and test the things that we have in the classroom. And then each lab group actually goes and checks out the radiation detector. And then they go and see, what about the cinder blocks? What about their basements if they live in a very old house? What kind of radiation might they be getting? So, this is now putting practical application to nuclear chemistry, nuclear physics, that we used to just be able to do as a demo or show video clips. So, in conclusion, I want to thank the school board, the foundation, everyone for giving me the opportunity to show you how adding these innovation grants transformed my classroom into more practical applications, connecting chemistry to the real world. So, thank you. Absolutely.
[applause] Do you have any questions or comments for sure?
Yeah, I was just wondering, so, all these different things, are they becoming a part of all science classrooms? The work they've done is it being passed out and then used from year... I mean, obviously, this is over a lot of years.
It's over a lot of years. Some of the activities have gone into the other classrooms, more so with honors chem, the water and everything, and earth science went into all levels of chemistry. I would love to, and with PLCs, we are, I talk to more of the earth science teachers to get more of a connection. So, slowly, we're getting more and more of an interaction.
It sounds like you're spreading the word to others.
That's what I'm really trying to do, great.
Sherri, talk a little bit about, because you're pretty humble at the end of the day. And as Tom has indicated, you've been recognized by your peers many times through being invited to present, but also receiving some awards. Why don't you talk about Golden Apple for a minute, because that was a pretty cool process.
Yeah, it was something that I didn't know that I was nominated. I got a letter saying, "Congratulations, you're nominated for the Golden Apple." The Golden Apple Award, it is a nomination that you never know who nominated you. So, I don't know who to thank. And it was a self-reflection on why I wanted to be a teacher, how I taught, what I do for the community and the education. And I thought my biggest achievement was becoming a finalist. I was happy with being one of those 30 people that got selected as a finalist. I thought that was the icing on the cake type of thing. They came and observed. And I don't know what my colleagues said, you know, because I did not coach anyone. But they saw my classroom, they saw what I do in my classroom. And it was amazing to win, you know. It was, it was nice to be recognized. And as Princess said, I am not one to really say anything. So, I did, I really thought it was amazing things. And to hear my students what they really think and can say, they, they're the reason why I do it, so...
And as the newer board members were on the board when you won that award, but we were asked to come over and be there when the folks from the Golden Apple Foundation actually came to LHS and they invited all of her students since she was teaching a class. And it was just an amazing affirmation from her students and the school community that she influences every day, so... And that was awesome that we got to be with Sherri down in Chicago at the actual dinner and awards event. It was very cool and much deserved. And Sherri, if you don't mind, I'm going to do a shameless additional plug for the foundation, okay? The mission of the foundation is to provide resources to enrich and enhance teaching and learning in the district. Sherri is a wonderful example, of many examples, of the work, very innovative work that the foundation has funded over the past decade. They have given out over $300,000 of innovation grants to our teachers at both schools at no expense to taxpayers. Again, over and above what the taxpayers provide. And the foundation now has an endowment that's about a quarter of a million dollars. So, in that 10-year journey, Sherri was one of the early award recipients and was great about applying. And a number of our other staff members have joined that conga line, if you will, to do some really amazing work. This is a great example of the mission of the foundation being carried out through our incredible teachers to enrich and enhance teaching and learning. So, wonderful, Sherri, great job, thank you.
Thank you.
Can I give another shameless plug for the foundation?
Yes.
You have been a part of it for close to 10 years, a long time. And you've always been a leader in the forefront of putting applications. And we always would challenge, can we get other folks up to speed and have the same zest, enthusiasm, passion that you have? I mean, it takes a lot of time. We put a lot of scrutiny on those grants. You take a lot of time to take those, write those out, submit them, put a very good case on why to do it, which is why you get it. You know, we typically, I know innovations grants, we probably fund, I would say, what, $20,000 to $28,000 every year for innovation grants? The foundation does. In addition to the innovation grants, each school gets allotment of funds that are left up to the school to use for innovation and for those initiatives, again, above and beyond what they would normally get through the normal budget process. And the schools both have to come back to the foundation for those separate funds to say how they were used. Those funds don't happen by chance, they don't fall out of the sky, they don't fall off the tree. There's a lot of hard work, a lot of volunteerism, a really good board, and a lot of people in the community that supports the foundation. So, to that end, one of our biggest, I wasn't one of our, it is our biggest fundraiser is coming up this Friday, November 10th, at Mickey Finn's. It's a terrific time, terrific cause. We have two alumnus, one from each school that we recognize every year. And there's a lot of fundraising, a lot of fun, a lot of camaraderie. But Mickey Finn's, if you haven't got it, it's called the big event. It's in every e-Paws that we put out. It's up on the foundation site, it's on the district site, I think it's on the school sites. It's everywhere. But it's a terrific time, the community comes together, and you exemplify what those funds are for. And the students that participate in it, obviously, just doesn't carry on for that year. It has legs well beyond it. So, thank you. And please come out and support our big event on November 10th at Mickey Finn's. Great.
Thank you, great job.
Alright, great job. I have nothing specific, so we'll move on to the student school board representative. Who's first?
Vernon Hills had their annual back-to-school kickoff dance. With a record-breaking number of students, ten, just over 630. There was a senior lip sync where four groups competed. And the winning group will perform this Friday at our Fall Recognition Assembly. We had six national merit semifinalists and 16 students commended. There will be a breakfast on November 13th to celebrate these individuals. Dr. G kicked off the class of 2018 in their senior year at the Senior Parking Lot Party. He made lunch for the students and music. And for sports news, girls cross-country won the Lake County Invite for their second year in a row. Boys golf won the Warren International Invitational Merit Club, shooting a 304. A senior, Brian Fabia, shot two under par 70 to win medalist honors. Conference is this week for the boys and the girls.
Volleyball played, their volleyball for a cure game. And in conjunction with the St. Viator volleyball program, they raised over $2,800. Homecoming is October 7th, and our theme this year is carnival theme. So, Student Council has planned a carnival date where there will be games, cotton candy, and popcorn during lunch periods. This past week was also Yellow Ribbon Week, which was suicide prevention, so it brought awareness to that. September 15th, we had a summer reading book discussion. And Mrs. Neavis took a post-book chat survey for the students to see what they thought about it because it's a new direction our literature department is taking. So, overall, we got, we got a lot of positive feedback from the students. And most of they said they appreciated actually discussing the book in depth with other peers and getting other perspectives on the issue because it was all grades discussing the book versus just their own and versus just writing an essay in solitude. They really appreciated getting into discussion with the books. And one of the authors of our books is coming to our school on October 7th, where our library staff has prepared a program where you can give a used book. And in return, you can get one of the author's books called All American Boys, signed by him. Our orchestra concert, our first one of the year, was on September 19th. And the freshman sophomore musical is coming up in October called Curtains. Tomorrow is the career fair, where over 50 companies and over 110 participants come. And students get to visit booths and discuss career and educational paths during lunches. So, that's something exciting that's happening tomorrow.
Alright, in LA test news, Palm's share of football have all celebrated their senior night. So, all seniors are excited. Football, we had our first home game on Friday, and we won against Lake Forest, 26 to 10, so that was good. And our spirit for that event was preppy, so everyone was picked out in preppy clothes. Our boy soccer team is ranked number one in the nation, which is like a huge deal. They're really excited about it. And so far, they're undefeated, eight to zero. This Tuesday, they're playing against someone on the line. And then also in boy soccer, Ryan Wittembrink, he was invited to play an All-American game in Orlando on December 2nd. So, that was a pretty big deal. In homecoming news, this past weekend, we painted windows downtown. And the theme of the windows is basically like 100 years and decades. And they look really good, so we'll see how the prices turn out for that. And then this past Wednesday, the girls and guys who are nominated for Sweet 16 are honor court. We also celebrated Yellow Ribbon Week a few weeks back. And again, the purpose is to celebrate, or not celebrate, to like bring awareness to suicide and mental illness and like remove the negative stigma. So, during Lane Crew Periods, they held Yellow Ribbon Week activities in order to educate freshmen about mental health. And then also, there are various activities outside like the cafeteria. And then on our announcements, we talked about mental health as well. On September 16th, which was a Saturday, there was Maddie Palooza, Maddie Palooza, which was hosted in honor of the death of our student Maddie McNerney, who passed away last year. Various bands performed at the event, including Paisley and Fun Monkey. And there were local businesses such as Cluckers, Dunkin' Donuts, CrossFit Freedom that donated food. Or the event was at CrossFit Freedom. And auction prizes towards the event. food or like the event was at CrossFit Freedom and auction prizes towards the event. And the proceeds for it went to a scholarship that will like awarded to somebody who exemplified Maddie's traits because she was just like a very positive person through everything.
Okay, so for Drops of Ink, Drops of Ink Magazine at LHS was nominated for the Pacemaker Award, which is given out annually to the best student mag, publications in the country. So, that's a huge honor and I'm part of Drops of Ink, so I'm really excited about that. Drops of Ink was one of the forty-nine newspapers or news magazines around the country to receive this distinction and Twenty-Six will receive the Pacemaker Award itself at the annual Fall Convention in Dallas in November. And then Wellness Leaders had their first monthly meeting at the end of August. So, two representatives from every third period class meet once a month and are educated in how to implement the ideals of a healthy lifestyle among their peers. And Wellness Leaders will meet again this Wednesday before school. And so, Dr. Clint has actually formed an advisory board, so this board is composed of students from all grade levels that meet once a month, bringing necessary issues to the attention of the principal. So, within the advisory board, students are broken up into committees in which they will specialize in addressing necessary school issues. There's Equity and Inclusion, which I'm a part of, Athletics and Clubs, Education, Innovation and Learning Spaces, LHS Rules and Policies, Student Experience and Wellness, and finally Start Time and Schedule. So, that's really cool and I'm really excited about that board. The Spanish exchange students came for, like for two weeks that they've been here through a program called Share America and they're more into the American culture at LHS and they will be leaving this Thursday. Additionally, the French exchange students will arrive October thirteenth and I know that I'm like really excited for, to see my French exchange student. So, talented LHS seniors were named National Merit semifinalists about two weeks ago. So, of those who take the PISA, fifty thousand, so the top three point three percent are commended, are, are commended scholars and then sixteen thousand, so the top one point one percent are chosen as National Merit Scholar semifinalists. Such a huge honor for those students.
Good. Great job, yes. Thank you. All right, superintendent's report.
Okay, just to continue with the good news, we'll put some names in, to the earlier announcement regarding national merits. So, congratulations to the LHS and VHHS seniors who were named among the sixteen thousand semifinalists in the sixty-third Annual National Merit Scholarship Program sponsored by the National Merit Scholarship Corporation. These academically talented students have an opportunity to continue in the competition for some seventy-five hundred National Merit Scholarships worth more than thirty-two million dollars that will be offered next spring. From LHS semifinalists are Allison Tong, Colin Miller, Aaron Chen, Siraj Randanran, Katie Lund, Julia Mullenhauer, Laura Zheng, Emily Roller, Emily Stone and Albert Su. A VHH semifinalist are Theater Chen, Nicole Mag, Mag Tony, Felice, Felicia E., Amal Perandai and Hayden Lau and Kevin Yun. So, congratulations again to all these outstanding seniors and the students already mentioned just this really great recognition that Drops of Ink has received and we're looking forward to seeing more of that. Congratulations to Mr. Gluskin and the staff for their work on that. And that concludes the good news tonight, so. Okay, next on the superintendent's report tonight is bid recommendations for the LHS Aquatic Center, better known as The Pool. And as we move forward, the board will recall that we did two bids earlier in the month and we have a number of bids.
Go back.
Go ahead. Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, there's a report I think we need to do.
Oh, I'm sorry. We are required under number two, I'm sorry, Administrator and Teacher Salary Benefits Report, we are required under state school code to compile and present this report in a format that the state provides us every year to the board. The board does not need to vote on this, we simply need to present it to you and to have a record that we've done so, okay?
And then it's up over to the website.
Right, and then Dan, we put this on the website, so it'll be available for the public.
Yes, since this is out for the public, can you just run, run, excuse me, run through the top so there's no confusion on what things are?
Sure. Dan, you wanna do that?
Sure, the, the school code requires posting of the competition for teacher salaries. In the code it defines salary and the information that it wants to include it as base salary, vacation days, sick days, bonuses, annuities, retirement enhances or other benefits. So, it's pretty broad, broad in terms of the definition of things, but that's essentially the terms that they're, they're wanting us to include.
Okay, so again, just to be clear, the bonuses in this were the...
Performance recognition.
Of, of the ones, okay. The annuities were zero, so that's an easy one. Retirement enhancements were?
Essentially would probably, most likely be the T R S, the board tierist that's paid for certain.
Okay, and then other benefits would be the medical, things like that.
Healthcare.
Correct.
Dental, so health, dental, life, if they're, if, if they're going to be in it.
Great, thank you.
Does that help that we get everything?
Yeah, absolutely, just again, just so, since this goes out on the, we just need to make sure everybody knows what each of the columns represent.
That's good, very good, Kevin, thank you. Okay. Okay, now LHS Pool Project. So, again, the board had approved two initial bids for pool work tonight. We're going to do a number of other bids that have been bid out, so we will ask for a motion. I think Jim is actually gonna do the motion this evening.
Yep.
And then we get a second and if you want to have any additional discussion, we can do that. So, Jim?
Okay, everybody relax, this is gonna be a while. The first bid list includes, first off, masonry work to A1 Group for one million nine hundred and eighty-two thousand, steelwork to...
I'm sorry, just to clarify that you said you made a motion, I just...
Yes, yes. This is a motion to approve the following firms for these following amounts for this, this group of bid packages. Masonry work, A1 Group, one million nine hundred and eighty-two thousand, steelwork, TA Bowman gets that one for one million four hundred and ninety-five thousand, general trades work, Stuki Construction for nine hundred and eight thousand, roofing work, GE Rutherford Roofing for six hundred and ninety-seven thousand seven hundred dollars, metal panels work for, goes to Sterling Commercial for two hundred and thirty thousand dollars, glass and glazing work for Lake Shore Glass, three hundred and forty-eight thousand six hundred and forty-six dollars, ceramic tile work, Libertyville Tile for two hundred and thirty-six thousand four hundred and sixteen dollars, acoustic tile work for, goes to Just Wright at sixty-four thousand eight hundred and thirty-two dollars, painting work goes to Cosgrove for two hundred and ten thousand seven hundred dollars, bleachers work, Carol Seating gets that bid for four, forty thousand six hundred dollars, fire protection work, Nelson Fire Protection, seventy-five thousand three hundred and fifty-eight dollars, plumbing work goes to DeFranco Plumbing, seven hundred and ninety-eight thousand four hundred and forty-nine dollars, HVAC work, Martin Peterson and Company for three million one hundred and sixty-eight thousand, exterior paving work to Abbey for two hundred and fifty-three thousand three hundred and thirty thousand dollars, landscaping work to Breezy Hill for a hundred and seventy thousand nine hundred and four dollars. Those total base bid is ten million six hundred and seventy-nine thousand nine hundred and thirty-five and we're also recommending alternate one B, which consists of two items, exterior paving work to Abbey for twenty-four thousand one hundred dollars and additional landscaping work to Breezy Hill for fourteen thousand three hundred and sixty dollars for a total of alternate one B, thirty-eight thousand four hundred and sixty dollars.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Yeah, just probably a question for Gilbein maybe. I noticed a lot of the bids, there was a, there was a big delta between the lowest bid and like, for example, if there were eight bids, usually one was significantly lower, the other seven were kind of in a different ballpark. How do we prevent from somebody low bidding and coming back and, you know, trying to say, oh, that, this and that and the other? How, how do we do that?
So, we, we do have a post-bid meeting with all the contractors, so to make sure that we're comfortable with, with what their bid is as well as that they have all the scope included. So, we have a, a complete scope of work as well as all the documents associated with the drawing, so essentially there, it's a recorded meeting where they're saying, yes, we have all of this in their, in their bid. So, we go through the schedule and all, all the other components of the project, but we only recommend them if we feel comfortable based on that post-bid meeting.
Right, thank you.
For example, in the concrete, concrete work that had already been previously approved as a previous meeting, one of the bidders, when they were going through that process, realized there was a mistake, pretty large enough mistake that they withdrew their bid and it was through that process to kind of vet that out.
Oh, that's great because I, I also notice sometimes you see the bidder like crossed out and not understand why, so thank you. Okay, any else? All right, Roll Call please.
Batson.
Hi.
Rudy.
Hi.
Huber.
Hi.
Luz.
Hi.
Lunsbed.
Hi.
Mauer.
Hi.
Thurman.
Hi. Okay, next on the superintendent's report, it's on the next page if you're looking on paper, and that is bid rejection recommendation on pool work bid. Pool work would be the major part of the project, I think I can describe that. As an overview, Dan, you can jump in here, we had three, see you guys, have a good evening, thanks for coming. We had three bidders for that project. Two of the bidders had not totally gone through pre-qualification with our pool consultant. Gilbein has worked with both of those companies in the past, they are very reputable companies, all have no problem getting certified, which really left us with one bid. And as we've said before, we are not generally comfortable with one bid. We think it would be unfair to our, really our constituents and our taxpayers to take one bid on this project, so we're gonna ask you tonight to reject the bids and then we're going to rebid this and we suspect, I think, Dan, that probably all three will rebid or two of the three will rebid on the contract and then we'll, we'll have some compare and contrast on that. Did I miss anything, Dan? Okay. So, we would be asking for a motion to, and we need to say it this way, just as it's stated here, to reject the pool work bid.
Okay, I make a motion that we reject the pool work bid as described. Second?
Any discussion? Roll Call please.
Rudy.
Hi.
Huber.
Hi.
Luz.
Hi.
Lunsbed.
Hi.
Mauer.
Hi.
Thurman.
Hi.
Batson.
Hi.
All right, Wilson, Kerry.
I do have one quick question that wouldn't impact how I voted, but is this in any way going to impact our timeline?
We, with the rebid, we are putting some language in for, you know, there are some things as far as materials that need to be procured and approved, but overall, we don't anticipate that it's gonna impact the schedule, but that will be a stipulation of the rebid for the contractor.
Okay, thank you. Good question. Okay, next on the superintendent's report this evening is a Brainerd Memorial Update. I sent the board pictures last week, the con, since then, the concrete work has been done around in the sidewalk and the grass seed has been planted. We looked at a final draft of the plaque today, the artist has done some additional lightening, light, lightening of the two impressions of the building, so you can see the detail a little bit more on those, it looks absolutely beautiful. And so, we'll be waiting for the plaque to come and if you have not had a chance to take a look at it the next time you're through town and cut over and take a look at it because it looks really nice. I think it's, you know, a very worthy project. Mark, you may add anything to that?
No, you basically, you covered it all, so we did, we did acknowledge and accept the final draft from the artist today, so we placed, placed it in production, so we're waiting, waiting for a timeline in front of the manufacturer.
Is it likely that'll be before the hundred anniversary or? No?
No.
I think it's...
Okay, so I'm glad, but everything else is...
Everything else is there.
Everything else is there. We, we still have to purchase some plants for the base of the structure, so we'll work with, with that. With the hot weather, I didn't want to purchase anything at this point, so.
That's right.
It looks great.
Great, thanks.
Okay, next on the report tonight is FOIA request and we've had FOIA, four FOIA requests since our last meeting. And the first request was seven thirteen seventeen from Ted Prilman, all evidence from LHS that had conducted its parking lot lottery in, in a format that was open to the public was overseen by an unbiased third-party entity, I E. Deloitte or C B I S. The names of the three hundred students at LHS who were given the opportunity to purchase an annual onsec parking spot and the names of the seventy-six students who were not given that opportunity. As an update to this one, the request for review submitted by Mr. Prilman to the PAC Attorney General's Office, the disposition was on eight sixteen seventeen, the PAC conclusion was the request for the review is unfounded, the file is closed. So, in other words, that information will not be provided. The next was on eight fifteen seventeen, Gabriella Lucer-Loracella, any and all purchasing records from five nineteen two thousand seventeen to current, including purchase order numbers, purchase date, line item details, line item quantity, line item price, vendor ID number, name, address, contact person and email address. Dan Stanley and Rose took care of this one. The deadline response was originally nine fourteen seventeen, the response date was nine fifteen seventeen because it was a commercial request. District time spent, one hour on eight twenty-four seventeen. Nathan Mahalich requested email addresses of all teachers and administrators in District one twenty-eight, Brian handled that request. Deadline was eight thirty-one seventeen, the response date was eight twenty-eight seventeen, approximately thirty minutes of district time spent. Nine six seventeen, Jake Griffin, so an assistant managing editor for the Daily Herald. Reports or documents sufficient to show the number of football players participating on each varsity J B sophomore and our freshman football team at each individual high school in the district for the current school year and each of the prior nine years as well. Brian handled that response. Deadline was nine thirteen, the response date was nine eight seventeen and the district spent approximately fifteen minutes. And the final one was from Bonnie Cav, administrative assistant at Deerfield High School. Information for all district administrative assistants, including position title, hours, work per year, numbers of years employed by the district, salary and hourly rate. Dan and, Dan Stanley and Rose DeSecco handled that. The deadline was nine twenty-five and the response date was today, okay? So, that's not listed on the sheet because we just did that.
Are those two, are numbers two and four the kinds of things we have to?
Numbers two from Halich?
Yeah.
Yes, we did have to provide that information and four, Pat, you're looking at the last one?
It looks like both of those can be our personnel information.
Yes, because it's in the public domain, so, Dan, go ahead.
What we can share is personal information, so, but, but salary and anything like that is, is fair game.
So, often these requests will come through FOIA requests, for example, the one from Deerfield, they may be compiling, they may be doing negotiations with the teachers' union or, so they're compiling information and they're requesting comparative data, basically, you know, outside of, let's say, Northwell, Northwest Personnel Administrators that Brian's involved with them, for example. So, that's somewhat common. So, if there's any question about these, we always run them about, run them by council to make sure. The other thing about FOIAs is we're not required to create new documentation, that's very important to know. So, if we have existing reports or existing data, but we're not required to sit in a back room and create brand-new spreadsheets as a result of this process, so, you know, we're mindful of that as well.
I'm just surprised that it provided place email, I guess, so some marketing person could now fill out their email.
Yeah, because it's a public, it's a public email address, so obviously their home email address we could not give out, but since we're in the public domain, we have to deliver it.
I think it's off the website too.
Yeah, it's...
Right.
They would love it. They're working for them, it's kinda...
Of, of course, and that's where the district time comes in, right? And some of the questions about FOIAs sometimes, you know, come in as the amount of time that would just have to be spent, you know, getting it off a spreadsheet and sending it to someone. Okay, next is, we want to acknowledge a donation and this is Ms. Becky Keane, who lives in Vernon Hills. We want to acknowledge receipt of her various, very generous donation of a Baldwin Grand Piano Model L, six feet three inches, to the Fine and Performing Arts Department at Libertyville High School in August of two thousand seventeen. If you know anything about pianos, Baldwin are really nice pianos, so that is, you know, And lastly, from me under other tonight, I just want to report, uh, to the board, uh, this evening, again, you're not required to take any action on this, that, um, the, um, staff and, uh, teachers and support staff and administrators in the district have met the performance recognition, um, incentive, uh, standards for, uh, this year, um, in AP testing. Um, the, um, um, a number of students tested, uh, we met that criteria. Um, and, um, also, the percentage of three, fours, and fives in ACT composite, uh, we also met that standard. And in extracurricular participation, uh, we met, uh, those contract goals as well. So, um, on December one, um, as, uh, in past years, uh, just because of past practice, um, the, um, administrators, teachers, and staff who are not on re, who are not receiving any pre-retirement, um, incentives, um, will, uh, receive a one-point-five percent bonus on their base, it does not compound their salary for future years. That is a one-off, um, every single year. In addition, any teachers that started here this year are not eligible for the bonus, you have to be here to actually do the work. Uh, and any teachers that retired last year do not get the bonus because they're no longer in service of the district, okay?
I ask a quick question, let's see, participation rate in the extracurricular, I'm always curious.
Uh, it's, um, ninety-four point two percent from sixteen seventeen, so that would be-
That's amazing.
Uh, the standard was ninety point two percent. So, uh, that would be any participation in athletics, any student activities, clubs, fine arts, fine and performing arts. Um, and, uh, obviously, we have a number of students that are involved in multiples, um, that are moving forward, so I think-
Not courses, but-
In term, yeah, in terms of, of participation rate. Um, which is fabulous, and we think, obviously, that the, the research and data on student participation in schools and students achieving higher rates is off the chart. So, uh, again, another factor of, um, our student engagement in school and their academic performance, so, you know, pretty exciting.
It's an amazing number.
Yeah, it's a pretty amazing number. Okay, Mia, go ahead, Matt, sure.
Just to make sure everyone gets recognized, I think you skipped the Yamaha flute donation.
Okay, let me go back. I did, Matt, thank you.
'Cause we do appreciate the flute just as much as the piano.
Yes, absolutely. So, uh, we also want to thank Mr. and Mrs. Eric Ormsen, uh, and we want to acknowledge receipt of their generous donation of a Yamaha flute, model two twenty-five S, that are Fine and Performing Arts Department at Vernon Hills High School. My daughter, who is in college now, is a flute player, and she would much appreciate that donation to the department. So, thank you for the, for bailing me out there, Matt, okay? Um, and I think unless there are any other questions for me, uh, that's the superintendent's report for this evening.
Okay, thank you. Um, the consent vote agenda is listed, uh, was reviewed earlier this month in committee. If I could ask for a vote to approve the consent vote agenda, please.
I vote to approve the consent vote agenda.
Second?
Roll call please.
Huber.
Aye.
Luce.
Aye.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Mauer.
Aye.
Thurman.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries, program personnel, chair personnel.
Okay, uh, we have some board policies up for first reading. So, first, we have policy two, two sixty, uniform grievance procedure. The change is there, it's just updating language in the body of the text from procedure to policy. We have policy six, one eighty, extended instructional programs. That updates the language to reflect programs that are currently offer or could be offered in the district in accordance with state law. Then we have policy six eighty, uh, release time for religious instruction slash observance, and that updates language to include both, include both religious holidays and religious instruction as an excused absence with prior written excuse. And we have policy seven, three twenty-five, student fundraising activities. That adds language to the policy that gives more specifics for the fundraising activities. This policy update will enable both schools to further develop procedures to go along with the policy for fundraising. Um, then we have policy eight, colon, seventy, accommodating individuals with disabilities. And this just adds language to include websites, as websites need to be readily accessible to and usable by, um, individuals with disabilities. Questions on any of those? Okay. So, you don't need to vote on those, um, they'll be up for a second reading next time, and then we can vote on those. Um, next, we have employment of employees, and looking for motion to approve the three replacement hires listed.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call please.
Luce.
Aye.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Mauer.
Aye.
Thurman.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
And we have nothing for others, thank you.
Thanks, ma'am. All right, Facilities and Finance Chair Person Batson.
Okay, a couple items here, um, sort of a recap on the FY eighteen capital projects list, please, on the agenda.
Well, we just, uh, wanted the, uh, community to know that, uh, we're continuing to work on, um, our FY eighteen capital projects list and updating our long-range capital, uh, projects list. As, um, community may recall, coming out of our budget discussions, uh, we wanted to make sure that, um, we, uh, had scheduled and are able to spend, uh, the capital, needed capital projects, um, resources this year on the projects. Uh, I think it's safe to say that we will be able to do that and add some projects if we need to, or take some projects away to, um, help as a balance around the budget. Um, at the end of the day, we're continuing to fine-tune that, uh, list a little bit. Uh, we'll bring that back to committee, uh, in October, uh, and review that in more detail and, uh, get that locked in, uh, ready to go.
Okay, and the next item is the, uh, two thousand seventeen tax levy.
Um, over the next month or so, uh, we'll schedule, um, a separate meeting with the board to begin to focus in on, uh, the two thousand seventeen, uh, tax levy. Uh, our past practice has been, we've had one, at least one dedicated meeting, uh, to the tax levy to give us, uh, plenty of time just to focus on that issue. It is the foundation of, um, um, the resources in the district, and it has, uh, obviously, an impact on, uh, everyone in the district. So, uh, that will be forthcoming, and Dan, although we're, uh, normally done here way before, uh, the deadline, um, when is the final deadline for the levy?
Has to be approved by the last, filed with the county clerk by the last Tuesday in December.
Okay, so we'll, we'll be, again, we're way in front of that schedule.
Okay, and then next is the, uh, approval of a copier lease, this is for the district office. We have a motion, please.
So, I'll move to approve.
Second?
Okay, any questions, comments?
Yeah, Dan, just, the new copier is fine, the old copier, we thought it was gonna go to the admin building, but aren't we gonna destroy the admin building? So, why, who are we gonna do with that thing?
Uh, it's going there temporarily for Gilbein to use, otherwise, Gilbein would go out and get their own, and we'd have to pay theirs. It's gonna be cheaper to just give them a machine that we already have and don't have to make payments on.
Okay.
So, that'll actually lower our cost to Gilbein.
Yeah, I was confused, 'cause I, again, I thought the building was gonna go-
It is, not just yet, but it will be soon.
And will they then re, relocate that to whatever their temporary office space?
Correct.
Yeah, okay. All right, any other questions?
We'll concentrate with, roll call please.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Mauer.
Aye.
Thurman.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Luce.
Aye.
Okay, that's, uh, anything that, under other? Okay, that concludes Facilities and Finance Committee's report.
Okay, Property Committee, short version.
So, just a quick update, um, we were approached, um, by a member of the community to see if the school district might be interested in purchasing a house off of Diamond, um, which was really across, across from the field that we have on Diamond and one seventy-six. It's right past those business buildings. Um, there's been preliminary discussions, Rick Middleton is, uh, representing us, and we are gonna go ahead and do some due diligence as it relates to the potential use of that. And it might play into potential strategy for long-term parking, um, with also what we want to do with, eventually do with the property that we purchased across the street. So, the team's gonna go ahead, talk to the village, find out what it would take if we wanted to use that, and proceed during that due diligence to see if that might be an option for a longer-term parking strategy. In addition to what we talked about in committee as it relates to looking to see if there also can be something done to the current parking proposal that we have for the pool site, so.
Yeah, that would be, uh, the potential for spots there, if, if it can be zoned. Um, we purchased a property and it can be zoned, working with the village. Um, it's surrounded by commercial buildings on two sides and a bike path on the other side, okay? So, it's kind of a unique, uh, piece of property. Uh, we think just kind of quick estimation, depending on, you know, setbacks and those types of things, that we might be able to get up to fifty parking spots in that, uh, space. And, um, it's, um, it's got some potential, uh, for us to certainly take a look at. So, we're gonna ask Rick to keep, uh, doing his work with, uh, um, the owner's family, uh, to see, uh, what we might be able to do there. And of course, we would bring that back to the board, we'd have to talk about that, and, uh, if we get to that point, you'd, you'd have to vote, you know, on the purchase price, so. Rick, do you have anything else you want to add to that right now?
No, I think, I think that, um, Mark is gonna try and communicate with the village-
Right.
And, you know, unless we were to get a go-ahead, you know, that, or at least a positive response that it could be zoned for that, then, you know, we're not gonna make any overtures beyond just touching base with them.
Okay.
Has to be done, I mean, has to be due diligence come to fruition, but it might be a nice option. So, let it run its course.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's it.
Thank you, uh, C D O.
C D O, okay, so, just kind of some updates, some things going on there, there's a lot of things in flux, uh, over at that campus. They are happy with the fact that they're, um, working at their new approach and drive, it reminds, reminds me of our situation at Libertyville, uh, has really reduced traffic and backups, um, Gageley, they've increased the bus lane, they make drop-off and different things. And so, they're doing a lot of construction and, um, road work as already, yeah. And, uh, it, I don't know if any of you guys have spent time there, but I, even though I've gone there all these times, like, I still always get lost, and the roads have just sort of convoluted, it's hard to figure out. So, they're, they're in the midst of working on that project, but the part that has been at Gageley Road has alleviated some of the problems. And they are also, I think I mentioned this once before, but they are in the process of, uh, converting a pool to, um, community space to use for the classrooms, so I thought that was sort of interesting, too. It'd be kind of interesting to see how that process went for them, since that's something we'll be doing as well. We are in the first year, or, we've had one year of the new tuition formula, and so there, it seems as though, and you would better be able to answer this, but they're still kind of weighing how that's all playing out in terms of, and all the state different funding as well. It's a little bit hard to-
Right.
Kind of keep track of what, what's what and where and they're bringing the funding. So, we just have to, I think, keep an eye on that, and plus, and, and I know you guys are way on top of that, much more than I am. Um, they've been negotiating teacher contracts, or will be, they've got, their teachers, uh, have a contract through this, the end of twenty eighteen, their career professionals through twenty nineteen, so again, they're doing, and as are most districts. Their superintendent is retiring at the end of this year, so they're well into their way, uh, into superintendent search. They're working with School Exact Connect, and have had some focus groups, already started this month. Will be hoping to get candidates applying next month in October, bringing five to six candidates to the executive board, narrowing it down, hoping eventually to bring to the governing board, um, a ca, final candidate by January twenty-fifth. So, pardon? It's a tough hire. It is a tough hire. So, that's obviously another, you know, bringing uncertainty to that whole, call it. Um, there's also, there's also really seeing a, a change in, you know, more and more students are going back to the district buildings, but the students that are, there is becoming in, uh, greater need, and more students coming to them in what they call, um, shaping appropriate behaviors, I think, is for the younger kids, and, uh, teaching appropriate behaviors for the older kids, kids with some pretty severe, uh, mental health and emotional health needs, and need a really high percentage of adult-to-student ratio, and they need more space. So, although their enrollment isn't increasing, uh, as schools are going back, kids are going back to their home schools, um, they are looking for more space, they're running out of space, so even though they've built some new buildings recently, or, and they've done, they're trying to get ahead of that, and they're looking at different, uh, facility, um, options.
Because of the nature of the needs of the kids.
Because of the nature of the needs of the kids.
Right, right.
So, um, just kind of being aware and watching for that, that will be, and, and also, of course, they're med, very medically fragile students, it can't be accommodated in their, um, home schools. And, then of course, the budget. We passed, or avoided to pass, the seventeen eighteen budget, which is pretty flat from the sixteen seventeen budget, uh, like, a hundred, uh, sixty-eight million, six seventy-one, six ninety-two, up, uh, a couple hundred, not even a couple hundred thousand dollars, but, um, so, they're projecting a pretty large deficit from that, uh, all of this year, the deficit they projected was much smaller, it was only about a million dollars, so. Again, they're getting their IDA funds or not, but, in our first meeting in June, they'd only gotten one, now they've got two, I believe, from last year. I would expect you'd be able to speak better to all this than, than I am, but, um, and I'm trying to, you know, they're trying to really keep their fun, they're trying to keep their expenses down, their revenue sources are pretty uncertain, and that's not a new story, so. It was passed, and that's my report.
Okay, thanks, Jim.
Good job, sure.
Good break, by the way.
Hi, ASB.
Yeah, just a quick reminder, I don't know if it's still time to get in, but the, uh, Lakes Division meeting is coming about October eleventh, and it's often a, it's always a, a great time to network with other board members from the area, other administrations, and, uh, hear a, a good speaker.
So, and that's gonna be over the double tree and Mundeline, so it's in the neighborhood.
It's nearby.
So, if you'd still like to go, let Denise know, just send Denise a note, or Carol, uh, but you can send Denise a note, and, uh, I'm sure we can probably squeeze in. Uh, so, nice evening, uh, Jim almost always goes, and at least one or more of us at district, uh, office will be there, depending on what else we have going on-
They can babysit me.
In the district, yeah.
Does anybody go out to have lunch in a week, on the Friday?
I don't know if I can.
It looks like it's interesting.
Yeah, the Ed, the, we had the Fed had lunch a couple of weeks ago, and the Ed Red, uh, lunch, which is our large suburban lobby group, their kickoff is in a couple of weeks. So, again, those are usually very good programs, they bring very good people in, um, and, um, so, if you have an opportunity to go, I know it's tough during the day, uh, sometimes to do that, but if you have an opportunity to go, I know Pat's gone before Jim, several folks have gone over the years. Uh, if you have an opportunity to go, again, just let Denise know, and we'll figure out a way to get you in there, okay?
Good, okay. Anything else?
Uh, Pat, just, uh, one last thing, just, uh, remind the board, on, um, the sixteenth of October, uh, we'll be meeting again on, uh, pre-negotiations collective bargaining. And then, uh, I would ask you to take a look at your calendar, um, with you tonight, if you can, to see if you are available. Well, this is really the bargaining team, so, when Pat announces a bargaining team, then I'll work with them, it would be our first session, uh, at the table. So, again, on the sixteenth, will be our next meeting together in preparation for, uh, sitting down and, uh, discussing, um, the items with the association, the union.
Did that end up working for you, and what was the, um, was it the sixteen?
Yes.
Well, we'll make this, it's your own thing.
Yeah, 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 we just won't have anything else that we could, yeah, we're good.
Okay, is that it? So, is there a motion or a adjournment?
So who?
Second?
Paul M. Beaver?
All right.
All right, thanks, good night, everybody.